And I go, well, my boy got me down the living room, you know, we took him.
Brad Oles.
He said, that's not what we need.
He tried to tell me.
I'm like, oh, great.
Some older.
Yeah. And the doctor just cut it out.
Well, I'm just telling you that.
No, because you got blood vessels in there.
Yeah.
I don't have a lot of things now. He was one of them. I said, take him somewhere and I'll get some stuff.
You know, they took that one break without.
He like, where?
He goes, well, go to them.
I have some. This was kind of huge.
Yeah.
Every time the boys named it, they would say.
That's kind of what I thought. I shouldn't have given that shit.
I'm really digging this shit.
She said she gonna watch some nuts, entertainment.
I think that's a good thing.
I think so.
Do you need help?
Probably.
Hopefully.
I haven't heard anything, Melanie.
Oh, I forgot six fifty.
Yeah, we got a tax rate here right now. We're streaming.
Just so everybody knows, we are, we are live right now and we're having our tax rate during at six fifty tonight, which is right now. So by law, that's what we have to do. So we start a little bit early. If anybody wants to discuss our, our tax rate of two seventy five, which is a state mandated minimum, I feel, I'd be really happy to discuss it, but you know, there you go. I got a few things I can share.
Yeah.
And I'm just glad everybody came early tonight so we could have the hearing. So a few things, we did get our assessed valuation back. I put that summary sheet in front of each of you. Once again, our assessed valuation continues to increase, to grow. You can see where we are. We have three different counties that we have property tax valuation in that receive revenue from. Those counties would be Howe County, this is the line shared with the majority of it. Then we have Texas County, we have Douglas County. If you kind of look down through there, you can see what the valuation is for this year, the 2021 assessed valuation. We received these back about mid-July. So I computed these and entered them in the budget to, to determine what our revenue will be this year based on the two seventy five rate levy, tax levy. You can see that basically total real estate in Howe County, as I said, it's the largest of the three counties, is valued at fifty-two million, seven hundred and fifty-two thousand, eight fifty. When you add railroad and utility of ninety-eight fifty to that, the entire, the total real estate valuation in Howe County is fifty-two million, seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred. In Texas County, we have total real estate of three million, six hundred and sixty-two thousand, eighty dollars. And in Douglas County, we have three million, three hundred and twenty thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars. So the total real estate valuation, if you go all the way to the right, is fifty-nine million, seven hundred and forty-five thousand, six hundred and ninety dollars. Personal property then, and again, you can kind of see where we rate from last year, but our personal property in Howe County is right at twenty-five million, five hundred and thirty-four thousand, four ninety. We have another hundred and twenty-three thousand, four forty on revenue utility under personal property. Our total personal property valuation is twenty-five million, six fifty-seven, nine thirty. In Texas County, we have personal property valuation at one million, one hundred and eleven thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars. And then we have in Douglas County, nine hundred and sixteen thousand, nine seventy-eight. So the total personal property valuation in all three counties is twenty-seven thou- twenty-seven million, I'm sorry, six hundred and eighty-six thousand, three hundred and thirty dollars. So when you look at our total valuation by county, when you look at combining both real estate and personal property, our total valuation in Howe County, and this is the, the property in Howe County by which the Willow Springs, the school district resides, is right at seventy-eight million, four hundred and twenty thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars. Texas County, we have, we have school district property in Texas County amounted to four million, seven hundred and seventy-three thousand, five hundred and two dollars. And in Douglas County, four million, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-eight. We will certify our, certify our tax rate levy individually to all three county rates, but they have to provide to us the valuation that they have so that we can make estimates on, on the amount of revenue that we believe we're going to bring in at two point seven five milli. So when you take a look at the total valuation for all counties in two thousand and twenty-one, it's eighty-seven million, four hundred and thirty-two thousand, twenty dollars. And that's all three counties combined. Last year, our, our assessed valuation in all counties was eighty million, seventy-two thousand, one hundred and forty-seven dollars. So that's roughly a little over a nine percent increase in assessed valuation. So that bodes well for our school district, that bodes well for our community. To me, more than anything else, that's an econo- that's an economic indicator of what's happening in the Willow Springs School District in terms of construction costs, in terms of new businesses being built commercially. Now, this will generate more revenue on the local side, but if you understand, our formula is based on the fact that we determine how many dollars we need based on our ADA and, and take that times our, our, our SAT and, and determine that we need this much money to run the district. And then we look at our local effort, which is this, and then we reduce that and then, and they basically say our ADA times our SAT would say how much money we have. If we reduce our local effort, the state gives us the rest. So if we increase our local effort, we're going to get less from the state. It's kind of what it is. But it's still good for our community and it's good for our school district because it shows things are happening. And I mean, all of you've been around, you've seen a lot of the construction that's happened in the last eighteen months to two years. And so there's a lot of good things happening from the economic standpoint. One and only, and I did call the clerk of Douglas County, the assessor and the clerk, that looked really strange to me when I received evaluations, is that's the value of new construction specifically in Douglas County. Because I looked at, I mean, I, when I looked at that and received it, I said, oh my gosh, that's, that's like really, really high. And our property in Douglas County is like some of the most remotest areas out there. So I'm like, who in the world's building what in Douglas County that's in Willow Springs? And so I called them and the clerk didn't really know what it was. He said, I, I thought that was strange. I thought you might call. Let me send you over to the assessor. And so we talked a bit and she pulled it up and it was a, it was a strange company. It's like Ozark something LLC. Well, that is the Ozark Trail Youth Home that we have, you know, in, in our county or in our, in our, in our, uh, school district that is, resides in Douglas County. And evidently that piece of property, she said, was val- valued over several million dollars. And so I'm not sure what they built out there, but I guess there's residential facilities and, and so there, it's a, it's I guess a pretty, pretty high valued piece of property. So the assessed valuation on that was three hundred and ninety-one thousand. So that's something that we need to take into account. So we're not going to get that this year because we'll deduct that. We'll get that down the road once it goes back on the tax road. So I thought that was kind of interesting. As I always say, I mean, we're, you know, with everything that's happening with the COVID, everything that's happening with the federal relief dollars that we're receiving, whether it be through CARES, whether it be through the ART, whether it be through SIR money. I mean, those all things are all fine, but they all will go, go away soon. I mean, at some point, not, we're not going to have those dollars to rely on any longer. Unless or until we increase our tax rate levy to something higher than two point seven five, our operating dollar simply will not increase. And if we continue to decline in ADA and we decline in enrollment, well then that, that's a difficult situation because we have fewer, fewer kids coming. We're not going to generate dollars that way. So the only way we're really going to increase our revenues is to increase our tax rate levy. It's not, it's not on the horizon right now, but I'm just sharing that to the board.
To clarify, if I remember right, and some of, for some of the new board members, if, if we were above a two seventy-five tax levy, we wouldn't lose dollar for dollar. Like when the valuation goes up, then we would actually end up with more money in our pocket because they don't, they won't, anything over the two seventy-five would be ours, the local money, and they wouldn't reduce from the, from the state side.
That's exactly right. It's anything above two seventy-five, which we need to keep, we get to keep a hundred percent of it.
Right.
You know, but the state then will only be responsible for anything at the two seventy-five level. So that's why if we pass a, a rate increase, it's, yeah, it's more of a tax burden on our payers, on our taxpayers, which is also generally new dollars for the school district.
And it stays here.
And it stays here.
Yes, that is correct. We collect it locally and we spend it locally. And so that's a good thing. So, so that's why increasing the valuation doesn't necessarily help us from an income standpoint, but increasing the rate levy would. But again, I want to
clarify, we don't have it on the, the immediate future plan to run a bond or do a tax rate levy increase. And that's a conversation that, that's a board we need to have. But right now, folks, with all the, the federal money coming in, I'm not sure it's the right time to run a tax rate levy. But I, I just, I just need to put that out there because it's never going to increase on its own. So we're going to have to have a vote to do it. So I don't know if there's any, any questions from anyone at all.
How many ESEA schools are above the minimum, you know?
We have, actually, there's two or three that are at the minimum. So I'm guessing three or four probably. Mountain View is over, Mountain, Mountain Grove is two seventy-five. We're two seventy-five. I think Ava may be two seventy-five. They may have some bottom, eh, they may have some bottom indenters because they built that, that without the federal fee money. They may not either. They may be at two seventy-five as well.
Only, only ten out of five hundred and twelve.
Yeah, there's not very many. No, there are not very many.
Out of five hundred and twelve districts in Missouri, only ten of them.
But I would venture to say that most of those are in South Central Missouri.
Yes.
Just ten.
Yeah. I was actually thinking smaller than that, but you're.
There's not very many that are.
It was eleven.
What's that?
It was eleven.
Yeah.
Somebody got up off the bottom.
I don't know that happened.
Why not?
So, so then at, you know, unless there's any comments, whatever, basically within the Board of June of this evening, I'll be asking the Board to set the tax rate levy at two seventy-five for the fiscal year twenty-two budget.
Well, it is seven o'clock. I'll call the regular meeting for order. You got a copy of the agenda in front of you. Are there any changes to that? I have a number of changes to that. Okay, I need to add a resignation from Mr. Eric Metcalf. He's a teacher-coach. I need to add a resignation from Rhonda Harper. She's a para. Within the agenda, I had Belinda Gilliland as a para. I need to remove her. And I need to add Kiana Rothemick as a para. And then the only other change of the agenda is I don't have a need for an executive session this evening. Are there any questions over the consent agenda items? Now, I receive a motion to approve as presented.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call it favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We're going to administrative reports. Hi, Marty.
Hi, we don't really have administrative reports today, but we're ready for school to start.
Okay.
Custodians have done a great job. Buildings are ready. A lot of teachers, I know, were in my building today and I'm sure they were in the others too, getting ready. And our theme in the high school, we bear up this year. Positive, encouraging students, trying to get that growth, meet them where they're at and just get that, you know, not looking holistically, but more individual student and trying to, trying to get that growth. So bear up is our, is our motto for the year. Sports practice has started today, so we're, we're up and running, getting things ready.
All right. Any questions for Marty? Ken, if you got anything to add?
Me?
Yeah.
Um, do we have pictures?
I, I can pull them up if you'd like.
Okay.
I don't know if I put them all up there or not. I just put the ones that I can actually tell. I'm not sure I put the one about the stucco removal.
I had asked Mr. Hall to, to maybe include some pictures of some of the work we've been doing in our building. Our building's ninety-seven years old this year. We're looking toward the next three years. In the back of my mind, I keep thinking, what are some things that we could do to celebrate a hundred years? It's, you know, it's a beautiful building. You've all, a lot of you have been through school in it and some of you come visit us periodically. They've been working hard on it and we're working just on some cosmetic things. Older buildings take a lot of upkeep. You know that if you've ever had an old house or.
Or black and white, you know, that's okay.
Okay, that's fine. So our big project this summer was the seventh and eighth grade girls restroom. So we don't have restrooms on our eighth grade floor. They come down and share with the seventh graders. And so we have about a hundred girls and a hundred boys, all of whom share one restroom. Our, our girls restroom was in amazingly bad shape. The old wooden stalls that were very narrow, there was no handicapped accessible stall in there. They, the doors did not, all some of them didn't close all the way. They did not lock at all. None of them locked. Just two small sinks. So anyway, we kind of did a lot of remodeling on it, but we replaced all of the toilets in it and they're now self-plushing toilets. I don't know if you know anything about middle schoolers, but when you have toilets with tanks on them, a really fun thing to do is to stand on the tank and maybe look over the stall at the next person. I don't know why, but, so I'm glad to be rid of the toilet tanks. We have new stall walls and we've put in the same stalls that we have in the boys bathroom. Those have been in there for several years, like six or seven years, and they have been sturdy. I assure you, they have been, tried to have been written on and scratched and those doors have been swung on and they look like new. So we're hoping the girls, they're the exact same materials, color, everything. So we're hoping they hold up as well. We put in, Carl came in and redid the floors and that was a job. That was what they were thinking would be a two-day job turned into many days. They had to, several layers of paint on them. They were uneven. They had their concrete. And when they went to drill for the new toilet plumbing, it's really, really thick. They, they showed me a core out of it and there are actually two layers of it. One layer's about three inches thick and then the other one's really, I mean, those cores were really big. So that was a job. He went in, leveled everything, ground it. That took a really long time. And then, then he put down epoxy, the speckled epoxy. It was beautiful. Looks clean. They were painted maroon and they did not ever look clean, even when they were spotlessly clean. Moved the sinks. Our girls bathroom is actually two rooms. There's a long skinny room and, and then there's a, an outside room. You go through that to get to the, to the room where the toilets are. And we moved the sinks to the outside room because the new stalls came out further and there wasn't really enough room in there. So we moved them to the outside room. We have three sinks now. And we're trying hand dryers. If they're successful in there and don't give us any problems, we will probably try to do that in the seventh and eighth grade boys bathroom also because another fun thing to do if you're in middle school is to get a big wad of paper towels and get them wet and throw them over the top of the stall of whoever is in there. So we're trying to get rid of some paper towels in, in our, in our restroom. So that was a big project and Josh and Carl did a beautiful job on it. I would say, come by and see it during open house, but it's the girls bathroom. So that might, maybe another time when the building doesn't have a bunch of people in it.
I was trying to find colored pictures, but I can't.
It's okay. It's all right.
These don't do justice, but I have to tell you that it, they did some pretty amazing work.
Yes. And I wish, I didn't take before pictures and I always kick myself when I don't take before pictures, but it's really nice in there now. And the, the girls and I thank you because that's the restroom most of, we only have one faculty restroom. It's on the third floor. It's a one, just a one stall restroom and nobody goes up there who doesn't work on the third floor because we have, you know, no time to do that. So we use our restroom. So we also put in a lot of new whiteboards this summer. We had, instead of the magnetic actual whiteboards, we had a lot of the shower board. And after a while, those don't erase anymore. They get to warn and they get little cracks in them and they peel. And so we replaced a lot of those this year and we'll probably try to finish up taking the rest of those out next summer. And we put a few in last year. We're putting new blinds in a lot of the rooms. Final mini blinds only last so long. Some of my rooms don't have any blinds in them. They've hung curtains of various shades and sizes. So we're trying to get everything to where it kind of looks a little more uniform and really clean and nice looking. A lot of painting in the building this, this summer. Karen Pitts came and painted and Carl had her, told her where to go and what to do and she did a wonderful job. Just a lot of really cosmetic-y things in the building. But you have to keep the old building, you have to, you have to keep it up. Our stucco walls, of course, are always a problem. When Carl went to put a whiteboard in the eighth grade math room, the stucco came down behind it. So we have another wall that's exposed brick. Our outside walls are brick, but inside that outside wall is another wall of a different shaped brick. They're more square and they're beautiful. When you take the, the stucco down off of them and you, they clean them up and he goes in and patches and trims them and, and then he puts that sealer on them and they're, they're gorgeous. We've done that in Mrs. Batson's room, Mrs. Binkley's room, now Mrs. Leia's room. And then next summer, we'll probably work on the library. We have an outside wall on it. It's just the outside walls. We've had roof problems and window problems and the water, when it gets between that inner brick and that stucco, the stucco just eventually goes bad. And so we've got some other spots in the building that are starting to look a little sketchy there. So, but anyway, yeah, we've had a lot of teachers in working and several new teachers that are, are just excited to be here. And I'm always excited when I have somebody who's, who's like, I don't just want a job, I want to work at Willow. And that was a lot of our new hires this year. So that was exciting for us.
Very good. Thank you. Any questions? Bobby?
Yeah, like them, I think we're ready to rock and roll. And with that being said, I like to put our focus on our faculty because they are rock stars. And so I've done this in the past, kind of an information sheet of our building and our faculty. And I'll just point out a couple of things on there. You'll find on there their years of service and their degree they hold. And our average years of service is thirteen point five, which is really exciting to me. That means there'll be some stability for years to come. If that would number was twenty or above, I'd probably be a little worried. But we should have stability there. And master's degree or higher, forty-seven percent of the faculty have their master's degree. And this year, we always have a theme. It's habitats and we also have a mantra. It's hashtag be more. You can see some of the accomplishments that they have had over the previous years. And so last May, I challenged them, how are we going to get better this year? And I asked them to give me a word or a phrase that they were going to be more so that they could be better this year. And so they all turned in a word to me and I'm going to hold them to it. And hopefully, and this is for students as well. So if you come in our building, you better be prepared to tell us what you're going to be more of this year so you can be better. And we're excited and ready to roll. So our building looks great too. You know, our maintenance staff is second to none. So come check it out.
Thanks. Any questions for Bobby? Marlena?
Um, not, nothing's changed a lot through the month of July. Luckily, other than hiring and repairs and things like we've been.
There's been a lot of changes in July, just nothing on your end.
Well, in, in the, in Chris and I, I have one of my, my housemates with us tonight in the Hicks house. They have done a lot of painting and cleaning and upgrading. It really looks phenomenal in there. New fresh coat of paint and dirty areas. And we no longer have a feather duster painted bathroom. It looks phenomenal to walk in there. Our conference room area has a fresh coat of paint and looks fresh. They've really done a fantastic job. Polish on the floors and cleaning up our space. It's very, very welcoming and inviting at the Hicks house this year. But on the spent side of things, nothing for, for report.
All right. Thank you. You got anything to add?
I do have a few things. Actually, did you want to share some information?
Sure, sure. A few weeks, well, I guess it'd be a couple of months ago, Scott, we were calling and I had a chance to go down to our wood shop and visit Mr. Hall, I mean, Mr. Bell, sorry. But anyways, we got to visit him with him and, and he got to talking about lumber and the price of lumber and kind of the struggles with that. And he, he talked about how they had been using rough cut pine for about the last year and a half because that's really what they had available and affordable at the time. So just talking to a few people, we, we were able to talk to Calvin Wood, the Northern Commissioner, and most of the wood at the county, we burnt, you know, when we do storm cleaning up and stuff like that, we burn it. And, you know, that's what we heat with. But through that last big windstorm, we just had lots and lots of, of wood and logs up there. And so we talked to him about donating some to the school that we had up there. And I had a few logs there at the house. And we were able to gather up some cherry lumber, some red oak lumber, some white oak lumber and get it to Noel Tully, who sold it for the school very cheaply. And one of the hangups we had there was, was getting it there. And luckily Bobby Adams with Adams Logging stepped up, hauled all the logs there, you know, and, and, you know, just the area that we live in, the amount of timber that we have available in the community that we live in, just to see the people step up and say, yeah, we're, we're going to, you know, add to this and, and make something happen. So we ended up getting about eight hundred square, or eight hundred board feet of cherry, red oak and white oak lumber for the shop class there for them to start. And Adam's got a line through another group that he's part of on some big cedar logs that we're going to try to get to them. And, and I just encourage anybody, if you have, have a down tree or something that maybe we could utilize for the, for the shop program. We got some, a couple of different sawmills that, that we can work with. And, and even Bobby Adams said, hey, you know, if they run short on something, let me know. I mean, that's the business he's in and stuff. So it, it was a good thing the community stepped up and I'd like to thank those community members and glad to see the shop class.
Yeah. Start off on the. A lot of kids do so much more. Like I say, cost of lumber is, everybody knows, kid wanting to build a project, a simple bench or cabin or whatever, that's a string.
And they've been working with pallet lumber.
Yeah. This is going to let them work with good lumber to build stuff. And it's.
So if you know of any logs.
And, and on a side note, I've been visiting with Matt and, and Mr. Bell as well. I don't know if he's talked to you, Dr. Spence, but we are looking at, at what we could do to upgrade the equipment in his shop. And just from our cost estimates, they're not huge ticket items. And those are pieces of equipment that's been years since they've been, they've been updated. And even though I've visited Mr. Bell, even to the point that the ones that we have are not in line with our dust evacuation system that we have up there. And so we really need to get things that we can actually utilize that for. And then we talked at one point in time, I'd already visited Dr. Spence, it's kind of down the, down the road horizon. We're looking at expanding current tech ed programs. And we've talked about this, about maybe the potential of a construction technology class where we would actually build a house somewhere in the community. Talked to Bev Hicks and she said the city would be interested in maybe donating us the property to do that. And we would just build a house from start to finish, beginning in the course of a school year to where we can then basically at the end of the year, sell that house. And, and people can get it and go in and make it the way they want it. But that house will be pretty much, except for the interior decorating, would be move-in, ready to go. And we could actually incorporate facts into, need to do some of that. So it could be kind of a turnkey project. But it's a good way to provide affordable housing to our community. And then basically, whenever we get back to it after we sell, just go back to the program. And so we're talking about doing some things and the equipment that if we do replace it, can be used for that in the purpose, in the future. And we could do that onsite too. We don't, I've done it both ways where we've done it at the, at our location and whoever buys it has to come and move it. Sometimes it's easier to just get the site and just put it onsite. There's supervision issues and all that, but it's still doable and our community isn't that large. So I, I'm looking forward to that as an opportunity moving forward. We've got several current tech ed programs, but I think that's one that's good for our community, is right in line with employment opportunities here. And so on, on behalf, I guess myself and the, and the school district, I thank you very much for your work and for all the donations of those that were involved in that because that's only going to help our wood program.
Living in a good community.
Absolutely. Yeah. A few other items that I can add to that, and I know that the prince was already pushed on most of it, but I can't, I mean, I would re- remiss if I don't say something about our maintenance guys. I mean, my gosh, they, I don't know if you've all seen the new freezer up there. They put that in and that, that thing came in and they had that, they had that built in a day. I mean, literally a day. And not only that, but I mean, you notice we've got a steer skid loader coming up, but they had to unload that by hand because we did have a steer. And I appreciate Adam kind of helping with that as well. But they laid that off and they started at seven, eight o'clock in the morning, by five o'clock, they had that built and attached to the building and sealed. And so that's just, it's just amazing. That and then the restroom project that Dr. Spencer talks about. And, and I, you know, sometime when school's not in session, if you want to go look at it, go look at it. Cause it's, and well, Mac would know.
I've, I've been there.
You've been there.
I've been there before and after.
I will tell you. I guarantee you, it is night and day. It is, it is really.
Isn't it odd, the amount of time Principal Spence and Beth.
Oh, yeah.
Not by accident.
I mean, but just the work that they do. And, I mean, he had a schedule from day one when we, when we got out of school and they hit it every single week. And I just, I can't say enough about the work that they do, the knowledge they have, the technical skills they have, the work ethic, but more than anything, they're just good people. And they work hard, you know? And so I'm just very, very pleased that we're fortunate to have them. And then just having quality people like that saves us a lot of money. You know, but we don't have to go out and contract. We've got people in the house that do all the work. And so I just can't say enough about all of them. And, and then as you all know, and I appreciate you all approved this at the last board meeting, Cassandra Bean is now going to be our coordinator for custodial services. She started last week. So she's starting to work directly with all the custodians and, and ensuring that they have everything that they need. And along those lines, we can talk about it when we get to the school. She worked hard all summer. What's that? She's worked hard. Oh, yeah. She did the, the, a lot of job shadow program or it's like, what, what's it called? Job Core, Job Core.
It's the summer work program for our special ed students. Whenever you are a junior going into a senior and you're a student with an IEP, you're eligible to participate in the summer work program through vocational rehabilitation. And they provide work experience. If we provided the site, the school did, they pay the students, and then they pay a supervisor. And I had asked Chandra if she'd be interested in doing that. They sent her to a training to learn what her responsibilities are to supervise. And I think she exceeded those expectations.
Well, I think she, she went beyond supervisor. And she actually been like coworker in many cases, because she just jumped right in and helped them.
And she didn't. Power walked.
She didn't step back and let them work. She jumped right in there and helped them, you know. And, and then when the program was over, probably about, what? The end of?
It was six, six weeks program. So she, she started the first week of, of June, and then she was started to develop the second week differently.
And then, so then the kids disappeared, and she still needed to power worse the rest of the stadium. So then she's up there still power worse. So, yeah, her work ethic's strong. She's, she's really good at, at interpersonal communications. And I just think that's going to be a good thing, not only for custodians, but for Josh as well, because there's some things that she can take off his plate that will allow him to continue to do what he does the best. And so along those lines, I was going to share with you, we did hire two additional custodians. One will come to the board for approval next month. So as we go into this, into this, another, I hate to say it, COVID year, we're going to be, we'll have two additional custodians floating, and we'll have two additional part-time custodians as well to allow us to continue to deep clean all the schools and sanitize and, and just make sure we have everything that we need. We kind of learned last year, because there was a couple of times where we've been, we've been, but we didn't break. And so it's almost like we need more hands on deck. Just if nothing else, they need to be the next person up, you know. And I like the person on deck to help us out whenever we were missing people in spots. And so I think that'll certainly help us. And having someone like the Chandra will kind of keep them moving forward. And I, I, I think it was an absolutely good hire. And besides that, the custodians, as I said, final preparations for school year. We've got open houses next week. We've got schools starting on the twenty-third. Teachers coming back next week. We've got our board, our building retreat starting on, on Friday. And so, you know, the summer's kind of coming with. And so we're ready for another start, start to the school year. I'd shared with the staff, and I sent this out a couple of weeks ago, the first contact, the first contract day for certified staff is actually the first day that they're required to be here, which is the building retreat, which is Friday, August thirteenth. And so along those lines, one of the areas that we wanted to spend some time and focus on, based upon issues that we've had with our students in the past, issues within our community, just really has to do with mental health awareness for students, and even more specifically, suicide prevention. And so I visited Officer, Officer Moore, and he was able to locate a group that he had actually listened to in the past out of Texas. Their, their solution point and the, the main presenters, the gentleman by the name of Phil Smar, but they go all over the country. And, and they provide suicide prevention, mental health awareness for students as a PD or directly with kids. And so I absolutely believe it's a need for our, for our staff. And I mean, all of our staff, not just our teachers. I think all of us need to be more in tune to what's happening in the lives of our kids. And, and what are some flags that we need to be aware of? Whether, it doesn't matter if you're a custodian, a food service person, or a teacher, it's, it's whatever. I mean, we're, everybody's around our kids. So it's just being in tune to that. So with that, they're going to be here on Thursday, which is a non-contracted day. And we're going to have a presentation from them from eight thirty to eleven fifteen. It's going to be at Mumper Gym. That'll be for all staff. And if they come to that and they attend that, listen to the presentation, then they'll each receive a three hundred dollar compensation for attending. And that'll be part of their September payroll. And part of that, I'm doing that under learning loss for S R three, and I think is absolutely appropriate. But more importantly, it's the message that, that we need to have our staff listen to it here and be part of. And then after that, we're going to have the presenter stick around and just work with the folks that we have on the front line. Our counselors, our, our administrators, principals, assistant principals, our SRO, Dylan Carter as well on the dual intimacy side, and then also Patty Snyder, who's been doing some social workforce as well. So we're going to have just a small follow-up with them over lunch and just kind of talk about things that maybe that we need to be aware of when we're working just right there on the front line. So, go ahead.
Because that could be just limited to Little Spring staffers. That could be open for local preachers or PD.
They could certainly come. No, we can't pay them the three hundred dollars. But I, I wouldn't be opposed to that at all. If, if I haven't invited them, because I, I just focus on staff. But if anyone wants from the community wants to come in and listen to it, I think that's fine. And I don't know if you have, I mean, who would be a good contact person to invite the preachers to do that? It'd be David Love, probably. Okay. I'll try to reach out to him, and maybe then he can take it, reach out to the preachers.
Scotty, yeah, Scotty, sorry, Scotty.
I can text.
Okay, can you take care of that for us?
And the date is?
It's at eight, it's Thursday, August twelfth, eight thirty in the morning until eleven fifteen. And they're certainly welcome to come in.
I think if we have this opportunity, we should reach out to others.
Eight thirty to?
Eight thirty to eleven fifteen. And all of you are certainly invited as well. If you get away and you want to come and listen, I think that would be great. I mean, it's a, I, I trust Officer Moore's judgment. He's heard it before. They've been at national conferences. I think it, I think it's, it's good that we have these folks in our community. So, so, yeah, if you would reach out, Scott, I would appreciate that. So. Then also, along those same lines, we also have our Cox Health Assessment, which is August seventeenth. And, and the Cox Health Assessment, they come out, and it's a voluntary thing. But they will take, they'll do blood workups. They'll do, I think they'll do the weight and all this other kind of stuff. They'll do a whole blood path scan. They'll give you cholesterol levels and anything else that they can find within the blood work or any other things that they can do, they'll take your weight and all that kind of stuff. But then they'll give you a test, and I've been on that. And this is kind of sponsored through our health insurance consortium. But there's been times within the consortium where folks have gone to this, and it's given them kind of a preventative, they've given them information that's helped them to go deal with an issue that they didn't know was there. And so it's being proactive and allow them to, to find something out early so they can deal with it. And so it is good for our staff to be part of that. And, and, and so this year, I kind of changed it up a little bit. And, and we haven't had great turnout in the past. So this year, I just offered a twenty-five dollar gift card for anybody who participates in it. I think last year, we might have had fifteen people, and this year, we're up to sixty-seven so far. So the difference of twenty-five dollar Amazon gift card makes. But, but it's pretty cool. They've even had to lengthen their time that they're here. So that's a good thing. So that'll be on, on August seventeenth. And other than that, we're moving toward the start of school. So. And then we're meeting at five thirty on Wednesday. I don't see it being a very long meeting, but I just need to brief you on where we are with all the S R three money and get ideas from each of you about what we need to do. With the S R three money, there's also a requirement that we have to reach out to stakeholders. And I'm working on putting together a survey for both staff and the community members on getting their input on what we should do with S R three money. I may even set up a couple of tables at the open house, open houses, just to talk to folks and maybe get input from them. And that's part of the process. But, but Wednesday's meeting is not going to be very long, but it's going to be, I really need to visit with you about where we are, and also need some input from the board about where you'd like to see us go with those dollars. And then, as I understand it, this isn't definite, but I have a person I consider to be a pretty good source, shared with me that, have you been following the infrastructure plan that's going on in Congress right now? And I don't, I don't think it's been approved. But they had a late night session Sunday night, and that's like a two trillion dollar infrastructure plan. As I understand it, there's dollars earmarked for schools in that plan, once again. And it could be as much as two thousand dollars per student. And so that's down the road. It hasn't been approved yet. But I think a lot of that's going to be indoor air quality and things of that nature. So I think there's going to be another bite at the apple down the road in a year or two. So those are just, it's just, it's just amazing. You know, I don't even know what else to call it at this point.
I feel like this is that bite at the apple. I feel like that's going to be the one that Snow White was eating.
It could have been the one. I don't know. I'm not even going to call me on that. And that's all it has.
All right. Any questions on that from anybody? All right. So if you'd asked me about six weeks ago if I'd been thinking we were going to have this conversation, I'd have told you no. But here we go with a safe return to in-person instruction.
Okay, each of you should have in front of you a proposed plan. Now, if you recall, I believe I brought this to the board, I think, in June. And the board approved it. At that time, meeting with the administrators, life was good, COVID pauses were down. We said, you know, let's just move forward, let's have a regular start to the school year for the most part. So we eased up on a lot of the restrictions. And we kind of went back to as normal as we could at that point. As you all know, the cases in, in Howe County and across South Central Missouri, really nationwide, specifically with the Delta variant, has, continues to grow. I think I looked at one point in time between July twentieth and August second, in Howe County, there were five hundred and sixty positive cases of, of COVID. Many of those are starting to reach down to younger ages, twenty to forty. And, and a part of it, the concern obviously is we have youngsters under the age of twelve who are unable to get the vaccination yet. And so all of those are issues that we need to take into account when we have a start to the new year. Now, DESI, many of the changes that you have, not many, a lot of them, are pretty much prescribed by DESI and or the CDC, all right? And there's some things that they're expecting you to add into this. Now, this is the Safe Return to In-Person Instruction and Continuative Services Plan. I told you that in June. And they specifically said it's going to have that name. But I think the reason behind that is there are still schools, folks in St. Louis and Kansas City, many metropolitan areas, they haven't been in school since March of two thousand and twenty, all right? So they truly are trying to get back to school. We've been in school, and, and, you know, we've done the best we could to get there. And I feel very, very happy and pleased with how we were last year, but this is another year. And in many, and in many ways, it's not as bad. In other ways, it's not as, it's, it's worse. And so we need to kind of talk through these issues. I want to kind of go through the plan. And this is also tied to S R three, by the way, and you may not know that. But S R three, we have to have the budget application was open July the twenty-third. It has to be submitted to DESI by August twenty-third. Now, I believe that's just a placeholder, all right? I think that's just basically DESI wanted to know what most districts have in mind. But you got to kind of get in line, because you have until October twenty-four to spend the money, all right? So they're like two years ahead of time. They want you to have a plan. But we can go back and revise that plan. It's, it's a moving target. The reason I say that is before you can even get to that point, this has to be done. And they even tied together, they said, until you get this done and complete, and you follow all the rules that you need to follow and post this online, then S R three, they're not even going to consider that until this is done. Okay? Now, we did the first one, but it's not the same. We still have one online right now, but now we got to change, we have to change some things because of some issues. And so I'm going to kind of walk you through some of those, open conversation, you know, kind of share your opinions on specific things. And then we need to, at the, at the end of the evening, I'm going to be asking the board to approve this document after we have our conversations in specific areas. And I, I believe there's going to be some areas that we're going to have to have conversations about just to kind of see where we are, because they are a, a departure from what we've done in the past. Okay? So if you want us to kind of walk through, I tried to highlight the main areas. And essentially, what I did, folks, is I went back to August of last year and just started over again. And anything that was in there August of last year, unless there's changes in CDC guidelines, is still in there. Okay, for the most part. Now, if you go on page three, that introduction is still the same. I highlighted those two areas. Those two areas are specifically because they're required by, by DESI, by the CDC, that they be in all reentry plans. One has to do with the fact that this particular document, it's not like a one and done deal. It has to be reviewed every six months. Okay? And it has to be viewed by stakeholders. And stakeholders to include students, parents, administrators, teachers, board of education members. And so they expect to see that. And they're going to ask in the application for the S R three money, what are you doing to make sure that happens? Now, the best way for us to do that is we already have a committee in place, the District Health and Wellness Committee, that has parents, that has administrators on it, that has teachers on it. We're going to add some students. So we already have a, a committee in place that can do this, and we'll review it. Except we're going to review it about once every, once a quarter. Because even though we may start here, I'm not sure we're going to be there nine weeks from now. So we just need to review it and determine if we can lighten up at that point or become more stringent. So that's why that, that particular wording is in there. And then the other one was a language requirement from DESI and saying, basically saying that you need to put in there that if people can't read it, they need to let us know so that we can do it in their language and make sure it happens. Now, if they can't read it, I'm not sure how they're going to be able to know to do that. But, but they'll just have to let us know.
All right. So let me just ask a question. If we're going to review it every ninety days, why don't we say that?
Oh, we can do that. I mean, I just went down what the requirement was. And I did, you know, that's the maximum requirement or minimum requirement. We can put that off.
If we're going to do it every ninety days, let's say every ninety days, right?
Or every, every nine weeks or whatever, which would be three months.
Every three months. I mean, however you want to work it. I just.
I, I have a, no, I have a problem nine days.
I just.
Because that minimum needs six months, so.
As long as it meets the requirements, and if we fully intend to do that.
Is everybody okay with that?
Makes no difference.
I don't have a problem with that. All right. So we'll do that every ninety days, which we're going to do anyway. So we'll review this. When it's passed tonight, we'll turn around and review it probably about the end of October, middle part of October, something like that. Again, the Russian, or not the Russian, but the, if you need something other than English, for us, it would be Russian. I can't think of any other languages out there where they would need that translated. But if they need it, just let us know, and we'll, we'll get it translated. On the next page, now, we're moving away from distance learning. This is the part that we, we don't have, this year that we had last year, we're not offering a local distance learning option. Okay? The base bit's going to be, we have a DESI, DESI approved AMI plan, and then Mr. Wagner submitted that. So he may, if you have questions, you can sort of respond to that. But predominantly, that's going to be sending home information to kids in, in hardcover form. That, and, and at level two, that typically is going to happen. If we have a kid that has to be out because of COVID, then they're going to be placed on homebound. And the way that content's going to get to them is sending home records to them, like we normally do. And, and so that's there. On level three, I'm going to have to, I'm going to change that. It said DESI approved, DESI approved AMI plan, alternative method of instruction. I went to change that to classes will take place for majority of students by seated instruction or distance learn. And just leave it at those two. And that would be a hybrid model, if we have to go to a hybrid model. And at that point, we would try to, if half of our kids are in school and half of our kids are not in school, then we would attempt to deliver some type of distance learning to those who aren't, because in theory, half of our teachers are teaching seated kids, half of our teachers are not. And so then the teachers that are, who are not doing seated kids could focus on distance learning. So we can handle it that way. If we ever get to level four, where we have to do a school closure like we did back in March of twenty, then we would have to deliver through distance learn. And we would have to crank that back up again and try to get virtually, reach out to kids and do it that way. So. Any questions on that at all? Okay, on, we didn't have any changes as far as general expectations for parents on page five. More pages, more page six, for general expectations for teachers. We're still going to give teachers a thermometer in class. They can take kids' temperatures if they feel the need to do so. If there's a kid with an elevated temperature, they can use their discretion on whether or not they send, need to send that student to, to the school nurse. So all these, none of these have changed from, from last year. Okay, down on the bottom of, let's skip the page. Okay, down on the bottom of page seven is something that we need to talk about. And I highlighted that, and I shared that with you in a prior email. Masks are allowed, and students may choose to wear masks or P P P, P P E, personal protective equipment while at school. That's still an option. It's a recommendation, but it's not a requirement. They don't have to wear masks at school. However, the CDC and the United States Department of Transportation have mandated the wearing of masks on all public conveyances, including school buses. Regardless of the mask policy at school, passengers and drivers must wear a mask on school buses. As such, the Willows Springs School District will require the wearing of masks by passengers and drivers to include regular routes and activity buses. This is an extension of an order that was put out, I think we said in January by CDC, expanded upon by the Department of Transportation in April, right at the end of our school year. And there wasn't a lot of communication at that time about it. Here in June and July, it has really gotten a lot of attention from DESI, from the CDC, from pretty much the local health department, from everyone, that basically this is not an option. All right? They, they, this is not a recommendation. The fact is that they, they, they've tied it to public transportation, public transit, airline, to include school buses. So the wording is such that it's a federal order, all right? Irrespective of how we feel about kids wearing masks on buses or at all, and whether about requiring them to do that is really not the issue. The issue is that we've been given a federal order. Okay? If we choose not to follow that order, then it opens the district to liability. I've had multiple, I've had multiple conversations with attorneys from MSBA, attorneys from Ed Council, pretty much all the superintendents around, and we're all of the same opinion that this is not an option. All right? They even sent that out DESI again, once again, if this is not an option, this is, isn't a discretionary thing, you have to do it. And they expect that wording in your plan. All right? So how are we going to do that? I've already kind of had some thoughts about this, especially in the afternoon routes. I'm looking at hiring people who would be willing to ride the routes, pay them additional amount. I do not expect our school bus drivers to be able to monitor whether or not some kid in the back's wearing a mask.
They can, no.
All right? In the morning, they'll be, their, the initial thing is going to be make sure when they get on the bus, they got a mask. All right? Just leave it at that. In the afternoon, if we can get folks, and I'll pay them, pay them enough to where they won't mind doing it. And we can use S R money for that, to ride the bus home and make sure they, be the masking police on the bus. And make sure that they're, they make sure that the kids are doing it, and that they're wearing it, and not taking it off and everything else. So there's ways to get it done. I mean, I don't have a problem doing it. I will tell you too now, as far as contact tracing is concerned, we'll have a conversation about that in a bit. Right now, I mean, if you have, the guidelines from CDC has such changed that if you are in close proximity with each other, but both people are wearing masks, there's no contact tracing. Okay? And so that's also something to keep in mind, that if we require masking on buses, and we have a positive, we don't have to worry about contact tracing on that bus if all the kids are wearing a mask. So there's a. So there's a positive there as well. Uh, my issue on that is I just want to 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 pass on to the board the importance of taking this seriously that we have to follow it, because I'm, if we don't, then I I do believe that it does expose the community or to the school district to some liability in the future, and and I've had those exact same conversations with with attorneys, several attorneys across the state. So I'm just gonna open it up to the group, is there any, any additional conversation? Yeah, we do have masks, by the way, that we can hand out to kids, so. Any questions about that?
Have we, have you thought through the the consequences of if a kid is not wearing a mask? If a parent says, no, my kid's not wearing a mask, we're, you know, I'm fine with making a rule or following, we're not actually making the rule, following the rule, but I wanna know what the consequence that that we're prepared to to follow through.
Ultimately, they'll, they'll, they could very well just be removed from the bus until they can start following the the rule. And the rule is you gotta wear a mask, and if they don't, after multiple times of having to tell them to put it on, and they refuse to do so, they'll have to be removed from the bus, and the parent will be responsible for transportation.
How many contact tracing issues did you have from buses last year?
Yeah, we had a few, yeah, we had, yeah, we had a few, and and part of that is that the school bus drivers are required to keep a seating chart as well. That's how we get the contact tracing done. Uh, yeah, we we had a few kids that were eliminated, not only, they were quarantined as a result of the contact tracing on buses. So it's not.
So you mean.
That's another position, I don't know.
So hiring additional, what, how many buses have we got, twenty?
Been planning and rolling.
I think we have about fifteen routes.
Fifteen of them, if I pay at least minimum wage.
I'm paying more than that.
Well, I'm just.
I wouldn't write that for me.
I'm just telling you.
If nobody's on it, but.
I was just writing it through the head, you know.
School employees is what you're looking at, trying to.
Yes, absolutely.
To work on to.
Yeah, that's where I was. Compared.
Yeah, ballpark figure, I mean, from what I'm thinking, uh, say, two hours a night. Uh, maybe, it could be about over a hundred thousand dollars over the course of a year to do that.
That's way better than hiring two teachers and educating her.
But that's, that's ESTR money, that's ESTR money.
Oh, well, it's only, it's only monopoly money, so.
It's plain money.
I I, what's the difference between hiring somebody in the afternoon and then somebody in the morning? I mean, the bus driver's gonna see them when they get on the bus with a mask, right?
Don't you have more riders in the morning than the other day?
The difference is getting somebody to the bus at five o'clock in the morning.
No, okay, so.
Somebody wants to meet the bus, he's going to have the bus at five o'clock.
It's a stop law in the morning, but not in the afternoon.
Yeah, a kid can things mask off, or not wear a mask in the morning, we if we don't expect the bus driver to be the mask police, which we don't.
He's gotta keep his eyes on the road.
What?
He's gotta keep his eyes on.
But you're gonna have, you may have one thing going on in the morning and one thing going on in the evening, right?
I'm just kind of thinking, I don't, I don't think I can pay enough, somebody enough money to be there at five o'clock. But I have to be in the morning to ride that bus.
I agree, I'm just saying that it is, you're gonna have a problem.
But you'll see them getting on the bus, and they'll see them getting off the bus.
And they get on the bus with a mask, I guess that's what the.
It's on the way with covers.
Why spend a hundred thousand dollars then, is my question? If you're not gonna, if you're not gonna ensure it happens in the morning, why not just make sure they get on the bus with a mask and.
When you be covered, you just wear your mask, yeah.
You know, and do the same thing in the afternoon.
And I would, and I'm not, I I, that, that was only an idea to ensure the integrity of the rule, okay? On the other hand, if we just require it and make sure they get on with the bat mask, I feel good about that. I mean, do it every effort to make it happen.
I'd rather do that, than spend a hundred thousand dollars for nothing.
Well, nothing, I think we better make sure they got their mask on.
Well, we're not doing it in the morning.
Cause the one thing we don't want is, we don't wanna put the bus drivers in position.
Oh, absolutely not.
He came up in the middle of the highway, yeah.
And I would.
They got their hands full.
And I would almost get to the point, when they get on the bus, make sure you got a mask on after that.
Right.
You know, but but.
Integrity.
Not, we don't wanna imply that it's not important.
It is.
So.
For the purposes of our plan, it will say they're required.
Yeah.
Put a sign up on the front for the mask.
And you can do that too, absolutely.
Recovery.
And we can have somebody stand at the, at the bus when they get on, make sure they got a mask.
And if, if there's obvious infractions, then we need to deal with those.
That's right.
And we can do with that without the bus driver necessarily having to stop the bus.
Bus driver can just tell an administrator.
Mr. Rogers will have a whole, Mr. Rogers. Just pass it off. There's gonna be a lot more red slips for not wearing a mask.
You know, if it's blatant, if it's in your face.
And you're gonna get some of that.
You are.
To start with.
No doubt.
There's gonna be a kid that the bus driver's gonna pick up, and he says, nah, I'm not, I'm not, so I guess we just shut.
I have to say, I I, I think masks are are probably smart on buses. If I was gonna be on a bus with sixty kids, I would probably wear a mask. I don't like government mandates, and I I don't think the government has the right to mandate this. I notice in the same, in the same document that they say, we're gonna require you to do on the school buses, the CDC guidance is the same for schools, but we're not gonna require you to do it in schools.
Department of Transportation, that's the deal.
So, so the problem is, it's mixed messaging, they pick and choose what they wanna do, the science is iffy. I I think it's smart to wear masks, I think we oughta do it, but but our job here is to protect the school's best interest. And if we have liability for the school, then I think it's our responsibility to let this go, but it makes me.
To to what end? I mean, when do we draw the line?
You're right.
I mean, if.
You're right, when do we stand up, we're the first line of government. We're the first line of government, we're doing the wrong thing.
If critical race theory comes running down the pipe, are we gonna say, well, it's federally mandated? If 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 we're required to.
If it's federally mandated, they pull over funding, yeah, right, what are you gonna do?
I mean, at what point in time do we have, do we stiffen our spines and say, hey, this is not acceptable for us?
So what does the liability look like then?
Well, liability could be anything, liability could be.
So little Billy gets on the bus, and little Billy's not wearing a mask, right? Because we didn't require it, little Billy gets COVID, dies. Little Billy's mom is pretty upset.
All right.
You're gonna have a huge liability.
Well, but not only that, but in visiting with several school attorneys, who I trust and respect very well, it's not only that, it just takes one complaint. One complaint from a patron who says we are not following a federal guideline. And in about two seconds, you'll have a federal agency at your front door. And once they get at your front door, then they'll look at everything, they won't stop.
Right, right.
If if anybody wonders about school choice or lower ADA, this is why, right here.
I agree.
If they wanna know why school choice and voucher come down the pipe, it's because of this right here.
I don't disagree with anything you're saying, I I I I agree with all you're saying. But I also know, you know, we follow lots of federal guidelines every day, and and you know, I I think this is pretty minimal to just keep the monkey off our back for the liability issues. That's my thoughts on it, I'm I'm not a mask proponent either, but I think it's a pretty simple thing to do just to, but to to, like you said, keep the liability off of us. You know, and we went through all of here last year without it, without without requiring anything. So you kind of know kind of where I've I've kind of shifted on it. But my responsibility here at the board is to ensure that I protect the the lot, the the district from litigation, potential litigation, whatever, that's my job. And I would be remiss if I didn't tell you that that could be an issue for us. And if the mask deal on the bus, I didn't realize until you just said it, that that keeps us from quarantining a bunch of people. I I think that's a pretty good plus.
I said, just put up a sign and go with it and leave all the liability off the bus driver.
Have the quarantine requirements changed though, didn't they change significantly?
Evidently, yeah, evidently, if you have two masked people in an area that you cannot social distance, they will not contact trace those if there's a positive.
Talking about the quarantining requirements.
Yeah, they're, well.
They're significantly different. Where we were quarantining twelve, twenty people.
Are you required to have a mandate within the school in order for that two mask policy to apply?
They changed that, they changed that.
I don't have any problems with people wanting to wear masks or getting a vaccine, or whatever they need to do to feel safer, to to battle this thing. I'm perfectly fine with the school encouraging masks, if that, if that lowers our, I'm with Dean, it's the mandating to telling people that what we gotta do is where I take issue with.
I understand.
I I think we should put all of our efforts towards encouraging our our students and our staff to take these measures that make sure that they stay seated in class. I'm very uncomfortable with that.
I I don't disagree with you, Matt, and and, but all I'm saying is that the wording needs to reflect what the federal guidelines are, what the federal order is. And and that's just, that's just, that's a liability issue, so.
I agree, but I do think we, masks when you get on the bus, mask when you get off the bus, unless someone just makes an issue out of it, we assume that integrity is.
Don't spend a hundred thousand dollars.
It's why, why spend a hundred thousand?
The level of enforcement is our deal, so, as long as they got one all they get on, they got them, they're good. I mean, and the wording's in the document, I think we're.
Hundred and.
When they wanna mandate us that we keep them on there the whole time, and then there'll be some more money that they can, they can pay for the yeah, people to make that happen, oh, yeah, I mean, if that's where it ends up being, then we may have to throw a hundred thousand out just to do that, but I say, we don't, I don't think we have to right now.
No.
But I, and I shared that just because it's another way to use money in people's pocket, but obviously. But on the other hand, it's like riding school buses for two hours in the afternoon, it's a tough one to do.
Yeah, that's a tough one to get money.
Any any other conversation on that at all? Okay, uh, and then I have to kind of go through the rest of it, have some highlights portioned. All the COVID stuff that you have down here, if you go on the next page eight, the the symptoms were changed, and I had Michelle Ferguson go through those. I can't remember, we took off two or three, but we added diarrhea or vomiting, so I guess that's now one of the symptoms. And then all these down here, I didn't highlight them, but all these are, well, no, these are, let me take that back. These are things that were in there last year, but the things in yellow are things that I had Michelle go through to make sure that we had appropriate wording that were, that was in line with CDC guidance. Uh, and on panel number four, it should be people who, not show, as a type of, the people who are fully vaccinated or previously diagnosed with COVID nineteen within the last three months may not need a quarantine. If your student has been vaccinated for COVID nineteen, please provide their immunization record to the school nurse's office. And so that's something that that is a CDC guideline, and then if you are fully vaccinated right now, you're not subject to contact tracing.
What does it say may?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering, it should say will.
Yeah, that, well, that I'm not sure, I mean, if they get.
Will or may not.
If they get a positive, then they're vetting, then they're, then they're.
That's the difference between challenge.
People, people who are fully vaccinated or previously diagnosed with COVID nineteen within the last three months may not need to quarantine. But they may if they have a positive case, you know, so I I did, I assume that that's probably what she's talking about. So.
Well, I didn't say anything about those kids that are vaccinated.
She told us if they're symptomatic.
Oh, if they're symptomatic.
If you're vaccinated, but you've been exposed, and then you get symptomatic, then you.
Then you may have to quarantine. Down on the bottom, under siblings or other students in the household, if a student or household member of the student's tested for COVID nineteen, the student will need to stay home from school until test results are received.
Again, we back up to the top to number four. People who are fully vaccinated, it says only three months, or is that just a poorly written sentence?
People who's diagnosed with COVID nineteen within the last three months may not need to quarantine.
Yeah, so if they're vaccinated.
If you're vaccinated, you're supposed to.
No, that's, that's talking about the.
If you've been. Poorly written sentence.
I don't think it's poorly written. People who are fully vaccinated or people who were, I can add people who were, cause we're talking about, we're drawing the distinction between those who are vac, fully vaccinated or those who were previously diagnosed. It could be one and the same person or not, but the the point that we're trying to make there is that if they had a positive case, they've got three months.
Right.
You got ninety days that you may not have to quarantine, whether or not you're fully vaccinated, all right? So, you know, if if we have a, when she's doing contact tracing, she's gonna say, are you fully vaccinated? No, had you had COVID nineteen in the last three months, yes, okay, then you're, you don't have to quarantine.
Then you need a comma after COVID nineteen.
Well, okay, then.
Can we get somebody, English, English teacher in here?
No, we don't think.
No, I don't think.
People who are fully vaccinated, comma, or, I think the comma was that the vaccinated, we're gonna have an English.
Oh, it's got a position.
You don't put it before the or unless it's a complete sentence.
Well, there's the English teacher back there. People who are fully vaccinated or previously diagnosed with COVID nineteen with that, I don't see where you need a comma.
Because, because you're implying within the last three months, and people who are fully vaccinated are the same, because there's no delineation, it's not separated.
Says or.
Well, then how about you do and or, if that's what you're concerned about.
Let's just carry on with it. I'm not concerned.
I like that, I like that idea right there. Carry on. All right, anything else on that page at all, I mentioned the other one down there, so. Vaccinations, that was something that was acquired by DESI, some type of blue statement saying that we would be supportive of any, I mean, do we have local vac vaccination clinic, uh, supporting any community endeavor that would support or promote vaccinations. So that's why I put that in there, just to say that, you know, we're not opposed to it, if the community comes to us and wants some support for some type of local vaccination event, we'd be more than happy to work with them on that, so. Uh, page eleven didn't change, student transportation, the same wording that we just talked about a few minutes ago, about requiring masks on buses. Uh, and then breakfast and lunch, we're going back to the way we did it last year. Uh, we're doing lunch in the classrooms, grabbing, go to high school, breakfast in the classrooms, at the elementary. Snack, I think, what, what do you got, Bobby, five lunch periods?
Yeah.
Five lunch periods, social distance, uh, and then you're still keeping everybody in the grind, but you have enough room in there with social distance.
We are, we're keeping fewer chairs, more tables, and.
Okay. How long does that take to run five patches of kids through for lunch, Bobby? That's like a, most of the day, you've got lunch going on.
Yeah.
First lunch is at?
Ten forty to, we're down at twelve fifty, so.
All right.
Yeah. And it's just back to back.
At ten forty, we kind of consider going to a brunch. Something like that. All right, athletics and activities, there's no changes on that. Uh, then the AMI, we we changed, we changed that to reflect the back, we did that the last time, that's we're not doing any distance learning, so. So that's, that's the entirety of the plan, any questions about anything on that?
Oh, a little bit to Bobby. Those kids that eat there early, how are they faring towards the end of the day, um, they keeping up? Are they getting extremely hungry, do we need it?
My grade is?
Uh, first grade, at ten forty.
Are they doing all right eating that early during the round, or there, or is there a snack that needs to be somewhere?
I hadn't heard any.
They're hungry when they get home. Really hungry. Especially some of those kids that have to ride the bus.
I mean, is that something that we need to be looking at around?
We're always looking at snacks and, you know, afternoon snack, so. Uh, fourth grade, they don't eat till twelve thirty, so they do have a morning, morning snack, you know, so. And we can do something like that for first grade.
I I think it'd be a really good idea to incorporate that somehow. I'd like to say that, cause I don't, I don't have the kids in that.
I did that.
No, you do, yeah. But that usually, my daughter usually eats the rest of her lunch that she didn't eat, you know, but. Yeah, I I think it'd be, I think it'd be really nice to, if you could figure out a way to incorporate that. Thank you. Okay. Is that all on the safe return to in-person instruction? All right, so now we'll kind of roll on over into the, for COVID related leave for staff, I think you've got a couple of different options. I, I do, and I sent this out to the board this weekend, I know originally I was just gonna have you like pass it, and I know MSBA had to suggest a resolution, so I thought whatever we decide to do probably needs to have the details on it, so we're very, very clear about whatever the board wishes to do on this. There's really three options, okay, one, one option is just to, you know, not, the COVID leave provision expired in January. And and then it's up to individual employers, if they wanted to continue it, they could continue it. And if they did so, then they would offer them some tax, employer tax credit, so that didn't do it again. Uh, but we continued it throughout the year last year, okay, I just did it on our own. So the question then going into this, because of the flare up recently, I didn't think that we'd have to go back and revisit this, but we are. So then it's like, do you wanna continue the COVID as is from last year? Uh, or do it with restrictions, or basically there's no more COVID? And if you are, it's good, if you have to be gone from work because of any COVID related reason, you gotta take a personal sick week to do it. And and so that's kind of what the conversation is. Now, before we go any further, turn the pages over on the back, cause I added this section, and and one thing with this particular provision, much like the return to school, is changing all the time. This happened today, okay, and I had to get a judgment on this. I didn't realize until today that they actually have home administered COVID test, okay? Um, and we actually had a situation where someone did a a home test, and they tested positive, so they just informed the school, said we got positive, you know, we're out of work, now it's COVID leave, right? Well, contacted the health department, they didn't know anything about it, okay? And so then I had the the person contact the health department, said, okay, I had a, I had a COVID leave on a home administered test. And they said, and they, so they kicked out the the form and gave it to Michelle, and said, okay, you're quarantined. So I had, I talked to Michelle, I said, okay, how does that work exactly? Because do they not have any independent verification, or can't anybody just do a home test, say, I'm positive, you know, and they take my word for it? Uh, and they said that we don't have a choice, because every healthcare provider that was part of this conversation absolutely opposed to this option. However, for whatever reason, the State Department of Health decided to go ahead and take the people's word for it. Um, the concern that I have is that, you know, not that anyone would do this, but some might, is that I think you need to have independent verification of a positive case. Meaning that you need to have it taken done by a healthcare provider, a school nurse, somebody, but I don't think we need to rely on awarding COVID leave on a home, on a home test. And so I put that that wording in there, because irrespective, whatever the board wants to do, if you're gonna do some type of board, some type of COVID leave, I believe that needs to be in it. If you're going to do some type of board, some type of COVID leave, I believe that needs to be in it. Now, we can change the policy, we can't change the health practice, the practices of the health department, but we can make our policy reflect what we want it to be.
And we're going to do that with the staff or with the?
This is staff, this is all staff. We can't control students.
Okay.
You know, because it's health departments, and that's a good, that's a concern. Because if we have a parent who does a home test and they say, okay, my kid's positive, they'll turn that, they'll contact the school, the school has to contact the health department. The health department will say, okay, contact trace. And we have to contact trace and maybe lose fifteen, twenty kids on a test that was given at home. Okay? And we can't control the independent verification there. We can here because it's our policy.
And the health department accepts home tests.
They said, right, they'll, they take their word for it. They said, there's no independent verification, they don't make them go back to the healthcare provider. They say they got it, they got it. All right? So as you can see, I mean, from the student standpoint, it's going to put us in a real bind. It could put us in a bind. We can control the leave side of it, just simply by saying as part of this leave policy, you have to have one from a healthcare provider. Uh, and so I would strongly encourage you, whatever you decide to do, if you want to do some type of COVID leave, that we have that wording in there. Questions about that? Okay.
Fully support that.
Okay. So then the option then is, do you want to do any COVID leave at all? That's one. Or another option would be to, to not do any COVID leave and just say, if you're out at all, it's going to have to be sick leave, it's definitely personal sick leave. And then the third option would be, and, and I got this idea because some school districts are doing this, is, and the whole issue that, that centers around this is vaccination. I mean, that's the issue, right? Um, if you're vaccinated, you're not subject to contact tracing. Some people have gotten the vaccine, some people haven't. You know, I personally believe it's a personal decision. I've always believed that, that hasn't changed, all right? But with reflect, but as far as COVID, with the leave is concerned, that's an issue. Okay? So what if we, uh, option two would be, what if we just said, okay, you get COVID, we're going to award COVID leave for positive cases only. Not quarantining, not contact tracing, but if you have a positive case, because there are people with vaccines that have been vaccinated who are getting positive cases. So whether you're vaccinated or not, if you get a positive case, you get the COVID leave. Okay, we can, that can apply for COVID leave and not necessarily awarded for contact tracing. You know, because you have to be close to somebody that has, that that doesn't, if that happens, then you'll have to take sick leave or something like that. So that's option two. So again, one option is say nothing, we're not doing any COVID leave. Uh, another option would be just like it was last year, except no home test. And the other would be with the restrictions on option two that I had listed down, which would only be primary, prominently just if you have a positive case. And so I just want to throw that out to the board and have a conversation and see how you all feel about that.
Option two is the positive case only?
Yes.
Option one is?
That's just like it was last.
Contact tracing.
Anything. Anybody that leaves school gets paid.
Anybody's had exposure and they leave school, they get paid.
And option, option three is?
Option three is we're not going to do any COVID leave, but if you're, if you're out, you got to take personal sick leave.
That's, okay. To clarify, option two, if they, if they are quarantined, they could still use sick leave though.
Correct.
We don't add.
Yes. If they have to be home with the child who has a positive case, then that's just like, that's just like personal sick leave. If you've got to stay home and take care of them now.
Or if they, if they have to quarantine, if they have to quarantine, they can still use sick leave.
Yes, they can. They, they, personal sick leave, they just don't get COVID leave.
Correct. That's an extra 10 days.
Because if they got to stay home because they're quarantined, then they just do it for, they use their sick leave.
Yep.
And so an option two basically is centers around whether or not they've been vaccinated or have been, had the vaccine.
No, it's not. It doesn't, vaccine doesn't matter, but it's whether or not they actually have COVID.
Well, the vaccine, you don't have to.
If they've had the vaccine, they don't have to be quarantined.
Correct.
Well, if you're, if they had a vaccine and they have a positive case, they have to be quarantined.
Okay, but so if they have a positive case, they're going to be able to use COVID leave.
Correct.
Okay, but if they've had the vaccine, but they've just been exposed, they don't have to be quarantined. So they don't, so they don't have to use COVID leave.
Correct. That is correct.
Which they wouldn't get.
So that's what is centered around is whether or not they've had the vaccine.
Centers around that, it also, it also encourages social distancing and whatever other measures you can use to keep from getting quarantined, to help out a little bit.
Right.
It supports the goal.
To, yeah, to try to stay in school.
Penalizes those who haven't got the vaccine.
No. No, not really.
Cause if they get a positive case, anybody, they'll get COVID.
Anybody who's vaccinated can get it, uh, they tend to have less severe cases, but they can still get it.
Those that have not had the vaccine will have to be quarantined. Okay, and, and they'll have to use their sick leave. Okay, so that's, that's the way they'll be penalized.
But those with the vaccine don't get quarantined.
Don't get quarantined, so they're still at school.
Correct. Unless they feel the need to go home, then they have to use the sick leave.
Do you guys have any opinion on this?
Everybody has an opinion on this.
I don't know that asking the administrators is the right thing to do on that, Matt.
Well, I mean, I'm interested in what is, the people that are affected.
Well, I think you'll hear from us is the best thing for kids is our experienced teachers being in the classroom.
Well, I agree, yeah.
Yeah.
Um, and I'm, I'm for providing some kind of incentive for people to get the vaccine because it will keep people in school, keep people in the classroom. And this is a simple way to do it. But I also understand that people will be penalized if they don't get the vaccine. So is there some other way to incentivize without penalizing them?
I mean, I think the fact that none of us have lab coats or stethoscopes around our neck is probably an issue. I think that's a conversation between an individual and their doctor on whether or not they get the vaccine. And that's where it concerns me when we start making, taking measures and moving things around and deciding that, you know, we're going to, we're going to make things more difficult for this individual when the, when the situation comes to our eyes, you know, whether.
Right.
You know, because they made a decision about their own health. That's where I start to begin.
I agree. I don't think anybody should be penalized or incentivized based on whether you want to get the vaccine or not. I agree that that's a decision between that individual and their healthcare provider.
But if our teachers are leaving their classroom at a rapid rate, then we are penalizing the kids who are, should be first in line here. That's who we're responsible for to make sure they get a quality education. Having that classroom teacher in there as much as possible is going to ensure that.
Where are you running discrimination at?
Huh?
Where are you running discrimination at?
There's no discrimination.
Yeah, people have a choice.
They do, but if you, you start, you know, pushing.
But then you're putting a teacher or an administrator, somebody saying, based on some health concern that we don't know about, you're putting, granted, they need to be there, I agree a hundred percent. But you're putting, well, I need to get this shot so I can say at school, you know? That, so what, what essentially we're doing is they're putting the health of the, their health on hold to be incentivized at school. See what I'm saying?
No, say it again.
Well, you, you said, I mean, the, that they need to be, obviously they need to be there. I agree that a hundred percent.
I think we all do.
And, uh, but I, I just don't, I just don't think that's a, I don't think they should be incentivized or penalized based on that. That, that's just my point.
But based on decision that they make regarding vaccines, we're going to be required to contact trace them or, or quarantine them. So should we pay for that? Should we pay for them to sit at home because they chose not to get a vaccine? I mean, should, should, is the district responsible for, to them financially when they're not at work? Right? Well, if I go out and drink all night Friday night, don't make the work Saturday morning, that's a decision that I made and I ain't going to get paid.
Right, but I mean, you're talking about a teacher that wants to be there, that wants to show up there and they stand next to somebody, they're not sick, they're ready to go to work, they're ready to come in and they're telling them, no, you got to go sit at the house. That teacher wants to be there.
But, but we can't control that.
But they, but they don't because they're not comfortable with something that maybe somebody else is comfortable with. They're not comfortable.
I understand, but that's something else that we don't control here. We can't control quarantine. That's, we're not deciding whether or not to quarantine them. We're deciding whether or not we're going to pay them during quarantine, right? That's a different issue. We're not going to pay them for not, for not being there under option two.
How many days is a sick leave? Does a teacher get each year?
Ten days.
Ten and two, two or something.
And it maxes at what?
So the best option then may be to no COVID, no extra COVID sick leave.
For anybody.
For anybody. They get ten sick, we get ten sick days a year.
In their sense, no one in either direction.
Correct.
That's the only way that no one is incented.
So, okay, but.
I, I, I question why it's the employer's responsibility to continue to pay people extra. You know, we already give them ten sick days a year, so now we're going to give them twenty sick days a year, paid sick days a year, just because we've got COVID out there. Now, why is that the employer's responsibility?
Based on health department rules, right?
They're not, they're not paying it, they just want us to.
Teachers get ten, parents get nine.
So if, if, if we do that, what if someone that's vaccinated, uh, tests positive?
They have to stay home, I mean, they're quarantined.
And they don't get paid.
And they, and they, and we all just use our, our paid sick leave, our regular paid sick leave.
Well, not if you do that, that exception in there, if you just do it for positive cases. Then if you're vaccinated and you get a positive case, then you can get COVID leave. If you're not vaccinated and you get a positive case, you can get COVID leave. All right? That's if we do that option two.
We're simply talking about quarantine on the option two.
What I'm saying is if we don't use option one or two either, we just go back to the, back to the old, the old school way, the way we've done it for half a lot last, half, however many years. They can still, if they get quarantined, they're off on sick leave.
That's certainly fair to everybody.
It's a personal choice.
I think that's absurd. I mean, this could go on for all year long. I mean, this.
This could go on for years and years. At what point do we pull the plug?
Well.
Well, as long as they're telling us that you got to sit at the house for 10 days or seven days or whatever it is.
Then it's our responsibility to continue to pay them.
We have to do something. You can't, what, what happens when they max out of time? We're telling them they have to go sit at the house.
Yeah.
Then, then it's their choice whether they want to max out of time or they want to go get a vaccination or do something to keep from getting quarantined.
So what, what, see, that's where we go back to. They have to go get a vaccination.
No, they don't. They don't have to.
If they want to get paid, they do.
Well, I mean, decisions have, have consequences, just like.
I mean, if they don't get the vaccination, then they understand the situation and they have to.
So they're just fired after their days or what?
Yeah, when they run out of days and they say, hey, I'm not comfortable getting a vaccine.
No, fired, but they just won't get their, they'll get docked.
Okay, and we bring substitutes in and then now that's, that's a, a good, good for the students?
Uh, I'm just saying that there's an opportunity to avoid being quarantined is all I'm saying.
It sounds an awful lot like, um, that we're going to favor vaccinated people is what it sounds like to me. It sounds like that that's, that's kind of the direction we're heading. If, if you, if you fit in this group, we're going to favor you. And if you don't fit in that group, we're going to pick, you're going to be an outsider and you're going to be penalized until you don't work here or you cave into whatever.
It depends on whatever the board decides to do, man.
That's what it sounds like we're going to do.
It, you know, so, yeah, I mean, that's the situation, so.
Well, I mean, if, if Tony's correct, the only way to avoid that is to offer it to no one and just go on with our normal standard pay. And you, you take, in life, you take your chances. You get sick for more than 14 days, we got 10 days to pay.
So you're streaming the fourth one.
I'm not.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, that's the way it is now. If, if, with, with anything that you come down with, I mean.
It's been that way for years when we had the flu. Some people got flu shots, once they're adult, they get flu, they go home, they use their sick leave.
Right.
Right.
It would be great if we can go back to that, but we just had a conversation about putting face diapers on all of our kids to ride the bus there. It's not the same as getting the flu. It's not the same as, as what we've seen in the past.
Yeah, and I'm not, I don't feel good about not, you know, paying teachers if they have to be quarantined uh, or if they're, you know, have caught COVID because they came to school and they have kids in class that, you know, have it but don't know it. And, uh, and they catch it from them or, or somewhere else. Uh, and then, you know, we say, well, it's too bad. You know, you, you got your 10 days or 12 days and that's it.
Are we not paying them out of care money here?
No. Last year we, we ate it.
Our teachers, I think, deserve that, especially in these times that require a little bit more out of everybody just to, you know, get through the day.
I, I agree with you a hundred percent. I'm, I'm a big fan of number two, but if fairness and equality is what we're looking for, then Matt's got to have a point that Plan Two favors the vaccinated.
Right, and.
Whereas no plan at all favors no one.
Or, or plan, option three or whatever, do what we did last year is the same as Plan One. It puts everybody on an equal plane.
And, and, you know, favoring someone that, uh, does something in order to stay in school, I'm, I'm in favor of favoring them, to, to use the word favor twice there, but I mean, I, I'm, I'm in favor of, you know, do, you know, giving them something extra. If, if, if it keeps them in school.
Our, our first, our first responsibility is education of the kids.
Right.
I feel we've, we've, our, you know, that's what we should favor is what, what, uh, what is going to favor the kids the most, and that is to keep the teachers in school. What's it take to keep the teachers in school? Well, that's the way I see it.
Well, well, I'll take a high school teacher, for instance, Marty. You got a high school teacher, I mean, they're most of the time not going to be within three or six foot of the kids they're teaching, correct?
Correct.
So they're probably not, a lot of times not going to be quarantined, or not going to be contacted.
We didn't, we rarely quarantine, quarantine teachers because of students.
Now, elementary might be different because they're in closer contact with the kids, right? So probably, and, and, I mean, you're not going to have that as much the older the kids.
Be family. Weren't most of our teacher quarantines last year due from somewhere not in the school building, correct?
Yep, correct.
Or from other teachers?
Yes, actually, my first faculty meeting caused me to reach out.
And we had a situation, I think the elementary, we lost like six of them because they were kind of, uh-huh, at the same time.
So, may not be a big an issue, huh?
We paid a lot of quarantine pay last year.
We, we ate all the quarantine pay last year.
I just don't feel that that is fiscally responsible for the school district to keep eating that extra pay. Sooner or later, this money tree's gonna grow, go dry. But again, it's not their choice.
And I understand what you guys are saying about pushing the vaccine, and I'm not, I don't, I don't wanna try to push a vaccine on anybody. It is definitely a personal choice. My, my outlook is, is students first, what's best for the students, and what's best for the school district as a whole. Teachers come in third on me. That's the way I, you know, I think it needs to trickle. As our responsibility as a board, not as a personal choice, as a, you know, but as a board, I think that, that's kind of the order that we have to look at things.
Is it still fourteen days quarantine?
And, uh, but if you have a, if you have a positive case in the same family, or there's another positive case, if you're quarantining the same family, then it's, they gotta do their quarantine, and then yours is fourteen on top of that.
So it could be twenty.
It could be twenty.
Well, and if, and if somebody else gets it in the family, then it just starts over again.
And your fourteen doesn't start until the one, the, your person in the family's older.
Do we think it's gonna cause lack of reporting, lack of honesty as we go into this stuff? We got some people that can, some people that can't, and, you know, you kinda get in there, well, I don't wanna get so and so.
It already has.
Oh, yeah.
You know.
So we would encourage that?
That's a personal choice, whether you wanna decide whether you have it or not, you know.
It is a conundrum. It is, house and trust.
I'm familiar with that.
So at some point.
So as I, as if, if you're asking for, this is gonna teeter you anyway, if you're asking for a recommendation from me, uh, I started with not doing any different. Uh, or no, I started with not doing any COVID leave. It's just, it is what it is, you get sick, you get personal sick day. And then I flipped and said, well, maybe we need to offer the COVID, you know, and just keep going what we did last year. Right now, I'm pretty much solidly in the camp of just do positive cases.
Option two.
Cause I, I, I just, if you have your positive, you get your subject COVID leave, and, uh, no matter whether you had the vaccine or not, you get it.
Is that what you're gonna recommend to the board?
That would be my recommendation.
Okay.
And then I would also recommend to the board that we revisit this at the end of the first semester. Cause I don't think we can stick to it the entire year, cause we just don't know what's gonna happen. Too many things are changing so quickly.
Well, it's just like we're giving that plan we talked about every ninety days.
Wouldn't we, wouldn't we do it then?
Yeah, we could do it every nine weeks, I mean, yeah, sure, I mean, we could lift it or make it stall.
I think there's a significant chance that, that nine weeks from now, this is gonna look as different as it, uh, does from nine weeks ago.
And which way, we don't know.
And who knows which direction it'll go.
Yeah, I'm not sure I would.
I think there's a significant chance.
Yeah, I just not sure I'm gonna lock anything in for a whole year at this.
I, I feel a bit about six months.
Short terms, what we got.
I'm good with that, you know, so you come back and, and after the first quarter and say, okay, here's how many teachers we had quarantined, this is, you know,
This is what's been happening.
What kind of information we got.
So adopt one of those three choices in, for three, for ninety days, and then come back and revisit?
Oh, so which one do we adopt, and, and who's making that decision?
Well, we will here in a little bit.
Yeah, right.
We'll discuss it again.
All right, uh, Mr. Wagner.
Yes.
Discuss it.
On a lighter note.
On a lighter note, uh, I'm looking forward to a P D this guy. Just like, I'm good, so when I come up to that. Come, I'm gonna keep this fairly simple, like, uh, every year in August, we bring the professional development plan up for, uh, adoption. Uh, I, uh, the only thing that's incomplete on, in this document right now is the Professional Development Committee, and we usually take care of that at building retreats, which will happen, uh, this Friday. So, uh, so, uh, that, outside of that, everything is, is set for, for this coming school year in the plan. Uh, two years ago, we started, uh, we started revamping the plan a little bit, and we have half of a draft ready to go. Uh, and then COVID hit, and we haven't had, we haven't had Professional Development Meeting, Committee Meetings since then. Uh, and so, uh, so we're, uh, we're, uh, that's, that's my goal with the P D C this year, is to, uh, is to get it more up to date with M CIP six requirements, uh, which are coming down the pipe, and, and we want to, uh, uh, and we'll, we'll prob, uh, when we present this to you next year, it will prob, it will most likely look a little bit different than what, what you see it's like, so.
Is that all for now?
Yes, that's all, that's all I have, yes.
Very good, any questions? That was really short for you, Chris, I was like, more, you know?
No, I'm, I'm finished.
All right, uh, more later, you're gonna talk about the Special Education Compliance Plan?
Uh, and you're up to like, uh, you have to beat his two minutes right now.
I, I probably can, only because you chose not to include my hundred and fifty page document.
I didn't, I mean, I've got it right here. If y'all wanna read it, it's right here.
But if you would like for me to read page by page, okay. Uh, every year, school districts have, that receive, uh, Part B funds, and we do, um, we have to adopt a local compliance plan, uh, for our special education processes and procedures. Um, we, uh, usually visit this, it's due before October first. Last year, we adopted a plan, there, uh, on the plan, we have two choices to make. The first one is when we identify students, uh, for categorical placements for, uh, school. And the plan that we chose last year, which is what I'm recommending we chose again this year, um, is for kindergarten age, that we have kindergarten, or categorical placements made. And the other choice that we have to make on the plan is where we would receive our materials if we, uh, needed support for blind or visually impaired students. Um, we have two choices to make, whether we would only receive those through the clearinghouse, through the state, or if, uh, there were other options to receive those, um, at a lesser cost than what the state options are. And I, um, selected to choose that we could receive them at a, um, at any location and not just the state clearinghouse. Uh, sometimes you can find resources, um, a little less expensive if you're not using the state clearinghouse for that. So that would be my recommendation on that option as well. Everything else is just the, um, standard processes and procedures on eligibility, um, how we identify students, um, the process for identification, um, that we have followed for several years, and none of that has changed. So that would be my recommendation.
Very good, any questions on that? All right, uh.
Mr. President Corrigan, uh, can I suggest we pass out the cookies now, since we're not having exact concession?
Okay, so probably good suggestion. I don't know, I could be on this next one.
I've been waiting for that.
This next one could be like a forty-five minute deal there, you know?
Well, we need energy, you know?
I hear you.
Last month, we, uh, approved getting going out the bids for the purchase of skid steers, so if you wanna fill us in on.
Sure, and, and I, I mean, I appreciate both Tommy Rothemick and Josh Owens kinda taking the lead on this deal, and they went out and they, uh, Tommy's able to get three bids from three different vendors, uh, get a bid from three different vendors, on three different skid steers. Uh, I sat down with Tommy and Josh, they actually went around to each of the vendors and actually checked out comparable machines, so they, you don't like skid steers, or what?
Are you kidding?
All right, I didn't know where you were going with this. I was just right in the middle of a conversation, and you're, oh, maybe I said something wrong, I don't know. Okay, and I have since last month learned how to pronounce kaboda. It's not kabada, it's not kabuna, it's kaboda. And y'all missed out on that conversation, but that's your loss, you got it.
They can go back and watch it.
They can go back and watch it, I could, I could forever. Anyway, I do appreciate Tommy and Josh taking the lead on this, they, they did get three different bids for me. Uh, and they, as I said, they went around and actually checked out comparable machines at every vendor, and, and at the end of the day, they, the, their recommendation is to, to go with Ezra Harper to kaboda. Uh, that price is forty-four thousand, one sixty, it wasn't the lowest, but they believe that it's the best machine for them. Uh, none of them have forks, you just have to buy the forks with them, it's another thousand. And, and the other two have backup cameras, which kaboda does not. Uh, you know, I'm probably not a necessity, but it would be nice to have it when you're around kids or whatever, you know? Exactly, so for another, for another seven hundred and fifty bucks, I'd, I'd say let's just get it, put that in there. So their, their recommendation is they would like the board to approve, uh, the district to purchase the kaboda for Ezra Harper for a total amount, including forks and backup camera, forty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars.
I would suggest with the work that these guys do, they've saved us that much money this year.
I agree.
Let them have a shiny door.
And, and, yeah, I think I said this last month, but, you know, when I first came here, I was just amazed when I seen him huffing off cases of water and, and cases, and pallets of paper, and, and, and those other districts just pull up with a couple of forkless, and they got it done in about ten minutes, you know? And so, yeah, I mean, I absolutely would support that, not to mention it's no removal, so. I think it absolutely, they'll be used, and it'll be, and the other thing that they like the kaboda so much, of the, the three, they really believe that that is the most user-friendly.
It's got a door that comes up and matches, so like, if they're out. It, it's a caboodle, but, but when the door comes up, it acts as if one isn't.
Right, and then often, they said on one of the others, if the door comes up, it kind of blocks the.
Yeah, and you'd have to take the door off on the other ones in order to operate it with the door open.
And they also felt like anybody could jump in that thing and use it, you know, I couldn't, but they, anybody in the maintenance group.
Anybody that can pronounce it can use it.
Anybody who says kaboda or kabuna, they can get in the thing. Sorry, I might, I, I didn't major in barb equipment.
Uh, any questions on that?
All right.
Uh, any comments from the guests tonight on anything on the agenda? Very well, we'll move on. Uh, we had a tax levy hearing earlier tonight that was very informative. Uh, motion would be in order to.
Was that another sarcastic comment?
No, no, I mean, you give us some very nice information there.
What's with all the snickering in the crowd, I don't get it.
I received a motion to set the tax rate for the next year for two dollars and seventy-five cents per hundred dollars of assessed valuation.
Second.
Who was first there? And Dean, you're second. Any discussion?
Could we, uh, review some of those figures?
No. Is that a roll call, or a, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Very good.
And on the next one, we would need to do that with changes as presented, I guess there were some changes there.
Uh, we, we all looked over the Safe Return to School Plan. Uh, a motion would be in order to approve that with the proposed changes. So move. Adam, one second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye? Aye, opposed?
No.
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 That's two. Okay. Um, I am C, uh, has been proposed by the Superintendent to approve Option Two for COVID relief for the, uh, for next school year, and to be reviewed after the first quarter.
Ninety week, or ninety days, yeah.
I received a motion to.
And you might, and you might, if you could clarify the motion, that this would be for COVID leave for positive cases.
Okay. Does everybody understand what the motion is? Motion made by Dean, do I have a second? Any discussion? Want to do that by roll call?
Aye.
Need to pass on it for a little?
Can you go over?
Nope, you're in line.
Can you go over that again to just?
Option two?
Yeah, just clarify option two again.
You don't go over?
So essentially, I deleted those items that wouldn't qualify, so the ones that would qualify under Item One, the qualifying conditions, they've been advised by healthcare provider to self-quarantine because the employee has or may have COVID-nineteen, or is obtaining a test or diagnosis at the request of the district. So if we have somebody coming in with symptoms and, uh, Michelle or, or somebody feels like they need to go get a test, then that would be qualified for COVID leave. Or if they're current for a spouse, child, or parent who's subject to quarantine or isolation order. So they could, they could use COVID leave for that as well. If they have to stay at home to take care of somebody else who's under isolation.
And the extra COVID leave would be an extra ten days.
Yes, they would get ten days, is all they would get.
That's, that's if, if the child's positive, right?
Right.
But not if the child's quarantined.
Correct, and, well, it's, it's.
Subject to quarantings.
Yeah, if they're subject to quarantine.
So, so if you get somebody there, but it's just not them.
No, it's, it's somebody in their house, or somebody that they're taking care of.
But if they get, if they want to leave, they have to be positive.
Has to be positive, right?
Kid has to be pos, not, not just a, you know?
No, that's.
No, just, subject to quarantine, it could be contact trace, so they gotta stay home to be with the kid who's quarantined, and that would qualify for COVID leave as well.
It's just them, themselves have to have a positive test in order to.
Right, they don't have, they.
But if their kid gets quarantined, they can be home to.
Take care of them, right.
Yeah, cause I don't think, I wouldn't wanna penalize them for something like that.
Kind of take care of your kid.
Anybody's gonna do that first.
That's, that's our priority, number one.
It should be.
All right, we'll go back to, to Adam.
Yes.
Dean?
Yes.
Yes.
Thought?
College?
No.
No. Yeah, I'm a yes. I'm trying to keep this, all right, motion passed. Six one, very good. Uh, motion would be in order to approve the Professional Development Plan as presented.
So move.
Matt, in a second.
Second.
And Dean, any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good. Motion would be in order to approve the Special Education Compliance Plan as presented.
So move.
Matt, in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Um, fruit reduced lunch criteria.
Yes, and you have that in, now, did we? Okay, you have that in your, in your packet, and I'll put the criteria for this upcoming year, that's, uh, uh, comes out from the, 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 the school, the school lunch administration, uh, every year, and they adjust that according to what it takes as far as qualifying for fruit reduced lunches for a family of four. They adjusted it again, even though we're gonna be on the same as summer option, we're not gonna charge kids, they still recommend that the board approve the criteria for this upcoming year. We're still gonna make a push to get, I mean, we're requiring them to fill out fruit reduced lunch applications. So we wanna get as many of those people to qualify, even though it doesn't really matter as far as their kids are concerned, because it's never gonna be charged.
But it matters to us.
Yes, from a, from a school funding standpoint, it does, yes.
Okay. Motion would be in order to approve that. So move. In a second.
So.
Any discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? And we just talked about a skid steer, a motion would be in order to approve the kypody. Kaboda, oh, that's right, yeah. For forty-five thousand eight hundred and sixty-six dollars with the addition, that includes the addition of the fork and the backup camera.
Correct.
So move. Adam, in a second.
Second.
Any discussion? What kind of timeframe are they talking about on that?
He said with that particular one, we'll look at it. Wasn't it?
It might have been.
Yeah, well, that was the John Deere, I think. See if it's, see if he has it written on here. Cause I think we can get the kaboder more quickly. Did I say kaboda? Did I say kaboda?
Well, you said it with a little bit of hillbilly slang.
Kaboda.
September, October.
Kaboda. I said it with the South Dakota Missouri accent. I thought you would have been appreciative of that. So yes, I recommend that we get, we get the kaboda, and I think we'll get it here by September, or October.
Any just more discussion? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Very good, anything else?
Y'all don't understand how much you're wearing off on me. It's been like five years, and y'all, see, I'm saying y'all like all the time now.
All right, I've just. Motion to adjourn.
Education is a two-way street.
All in a second.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, can stay.
You know, I hate to break, but I remember when we were here before the Superintendent, you called, uh, the Highway Department here M dot.
No, I didn't.
Are you sure?
I really did. Well, I would know any difference. See, you guys, I am, you're grown up. I'm like, you're becoming one of y'all, see y'all.
You guys ever hear that podcast, uh, Bear Grease? Oh, it's, it's a good one, there's one, uh, surgeon, surgeon for acres. That talks about slag, acorns, instead of.
Oh, acorns?
Yeah, acorns, yeah. Uh, it, it's a, it's a huge.
Hey, you know, we're still, uh.
Mac, we're still fishing, you know?
The boundary waters?
Yeah.
How was?
It's all way up.
How was it?
Canadian waters. National Park, basically, that's canoe. Top water.